Call our meeting to order, please. If I could ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence and then we'll ask Ms. Tackett to lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could call the roll place.
Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mrs. Butcher-Crawley?
Here.
Mrs. Singer-Erdley?
Here.
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mrs. Tingle-Sames?
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Thank you. We have a call. Karen had already let us know that she could not be present tonight, so otherwise we have a full house. Each of you should have a copy of the minutes from our last meeting of November the 26th. If you'd like to look at that over for any possible corrections or additions.
I make a motion.
Thank you.
Second?
And seconded, if there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Minutes are approved. Also in your packet, each of you should have received a copy of our latest check register, if you can indicate if you've received that. Thank you. Now at the portion of the meeting for public comments, first on the public sign-in sheet is Ann Bryn-Gartner Graham. You can let somebody else speak.
Speak into the mic.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me? Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for giving me this opportunity to speak before you tonight. My name is Ann Bryn-Gartner Graham. Our family has owned land, operated businesses, and lived in Georgetown for quite some time. Currently, my brothers and I are marketing 100-plus acres of bypass frontage property, which is within the city boundary and needs sewer access. We continue to seek advice from Georgetown professionals in law, planning and zoning, engineering, and the local utility service providers to help us improve this property. After reviewing the proposals recently presented by the Georgetown Municipal Water and Sewer Service, we support proposal number three and think taking this more comprehensive option will save the city money in the long term. It seems everywhere in the country, infrastructure is the hot topic and that the timing is right for Georgetown to address its future needs. We have been impressed by the dedication and professionalism of the GMWSS staff in trying to solve the long-term sewer problems of the city. A funding package has been put together, which includes most of the key players, and is enough to start work on proposal three. We understand work must be started soon to keep some of the financing in place. Our family has spent more than eight years seeking a solution for our property. Now, with the help of the GMWSS staff and your support, a solution that includes the landowners within the city boundaries is possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Graham. And we'll be asking the council to take action on an engineering contract for just this project later in the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the public sign-in sheet is Mr. Robert Haley Conway.
Counsel, how are you? Happy holidays. I just wanted to come through to the council just to make a notice of a situation that I feel like needs to be addressed. I understand it is a state issue, but US 460 West on the eastbound lane, starting at Montgomery Avenue all the way to Kentucky Avenue, there are no culverts there, there is no drainage there. If you've noticed, you can go right now, you have water running across the base of Kentucky Avenue. And I'm concerned that at some point in time, because every morning it's freezing, somebody's going to slide right into traffic and somebody's going to get it right there if it hadn't already happened. If you look, starting where Terry Deaver's house is, from there, there's been water. Understand, it's been a rainy year, but there has been water nonstop, like there is a wet weather spring, starting somewhere between Montgomery and where those four houses up on top of the hill, where there is, you know, the steep banks, there's no sidewalks there. If you get a chance tonight when you leave, just drive by there and you'll notice there is water running across Kentucky Avenue and as you go down towards the apartments down there, that seems to be getting worse. And like I said, I know it's a state highway, state-maintained, but I would think that the city would be in your interest to look at it and see if you can put a little pressure on the state to do some culverts or something, but someone's going to get hurt there. When you come off Kentucky Avenue, it's pretty steep, and if you get right to the bottom of it, and the reason why I bring it up is this happened to me, and you're going to slide right into incoming traffic coming in towards Georgetown from Frankfurt. And I think it's a situation that probably needs to be looked at. And that's all I got to say. Go ahead, Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Haley, can I ask a quick question? As you come down Kentucky, let's see, I guess Kentucky Avenue?
It's right at the base of it. It goes across Kentucky in front of where Steve Hockins Smith used to live. It's, and it's been there all year. It hasn't ceased, it hasn't dried up, and I've mentioned it to Millie, and I figured that tonight would be a good night, since it's her last meeting, I wanted to come see her. But I think it's something that you all should look at, because it's going to get worse, and there's no drainage there whatsoever. On that bank, there's no culverts there, for whatever reason. It's either filled in with soil that's run off the hill or whatever, but I think it's something you need to look at. But it starts somewhere about halfway in front of Terry's house, and then there's just water nonstop there.
I used to drive down Kentucky Avenue literally every day, but in the past year, I really haven't been down it much. I mean, we can test that water to see if there's, I guess, chlorine in it or something.
You know, I was wondering whether it's, could be a leak in the water lines, it could be a wet weather spring.
Yeah, but it would have been there in years past.
Or it could be, it comes from somebody's basement, maybe.
It's just worked, been so wet.
But it's there nonstop, and actually, I looked at it before I came here tonight. If you look, it's running, and it's a constant flow. Come here.
Thank you. Next on the public sign-in sheet is Mr. Stephen Price.
Mayor Prather, Town Council, I was picking persimmons today, and I brought each of you a pomegranate. If you, I'm going to pass them around, and if you want one, you can take one. I laid a napkin there behind your seat, and if you like the pomegranates, help yourself. One of several fruits we were fortunate to have that grown wild naturally, here in Georgetown. And I'm doing everything I can to cultivate, despite the fact that, or in spite of the fact that our code enforcement, who says she's not here, if you like the pomegranates.
I think I'm going to pass.
All right.
Thank you.
Do you like a pomegranate?
Look at it, smell it.
Likes the pomegranate? Do you like one? Anybody else like one? Right here, before we leave, we can get you a pomegranate. We are fortunate to have persimmons, pawpaws, blackberries, raspberries, passion fruit, several other, all kinds of wild edible weeds available for foraging, simply walking out there and taking them. They volunteer, no planting involved required, no cultivation, no fertilization. But I was in the PVA office recently, saw this notice from the code enforcement office to anybody who comes into the PVA office, and it says, here are the top 10 code violations in a guide for property owners in Georgetown, Kentucky. Number one, tall grass and weeds. Grass must not exceed 10 inches in height. This is erroneous, because this council passed in 2006 ordinance number 06-027, which has been recodified into ordinance 16-009, which clearly says that the requirement for 10 inches of height in grass is repealed.
Steve, we have a very different interpretation of that. So we think we're doing citizens a good favor by letting them know upfront the code violations that they should avoid. The number-one code violation we have is tall grass. We disagree with your interpretation of that ordinance, and I believe the local courts disagree with your interpretation of that ordinance.
Well, Mayor Prather, I mean, repeal, what does the word repeal mean?
I'm not, Steve, I'm not going to have a debate with you. I'm just saying that that document that we ask code enforcement to develop for the use of citizens is appropriate, and we're going to keep using it.
On the contrary, Mayor, Mayor Prather, it defies your own ordinance. Ordinance 06-027, recodified into 16-099.
Steve, I want you to discuss that with the city attorney outside of this meeting. I'm not going to debate that with you in this meeting. We've got a very crowded agenda. We're not going to agree on this topic, and you need to discuss it with the legal staff outside of this meeting.
Well, I'm raising the issue to the council, Mayor Prather, because we're talking about vegetation, vegetation that's either wanted or, in your opinion, unwanted. And I brought to your office this last week, this publication published December the 5th by the Journal of the American Heart Association, which relies on data collected in Louisville, Kentucky, indicating that the more vegetation and the closer the vegetation to people's homes, the better chance they have of avoiding illness, mental illness, physical illness, particularly cardiovascular problems. Did you get the paperwork I left for you?
Yes, I did, Steve.
And I left a copy for Attorney Hartley and for Attorney Golden.
And the Health Department will also help us understand the significant health risk from the vermin and rodents and snakes that leave the property that's not maintained and visit their neighbors.
What snakes?
Steve, I'm not going to waste the council's time. Is there a specific statement you'd like to make to the council? Please make it.
Well, I am making a statement. I'm saying, what I'm saying is that you have authorized the town to repeal ordinance 06-027, and you're continuing to publish a requirement that everybody has to mow their grass if it exceeds 10 inches. That's the statement I'm making. And you could say, well, what difference does it make? The difference is that all kinds of scientific evidence, including this study done at the University of Louisville for the American Heart Association, concludes that vegetation is healthful, the more, the better, the closer, the better. Not only that, but vegetation moderates this bigger problem, which, I don't know whether you align how you regard climate change, climate warming, but the vegetation moderates climate warming, reduces climate warming, and the Herald Leader just published here on December the 5th, Lakes and the Herald Leader, I don't know what you think of Lakes and the Herald Leader, but what they say is that, if I can find it here in a hurry, if you want a Kentucky with more droughts, gully washer storms, more disease-bearing ticks, I think it says, more disease-bearing mosquitoes and ticks, more invasive plant species crowding out crops and pasture, more gray 100-degree days when being outdoors induces heat sickness, and the air you breathe poisons your lungs, you want more floods and tornadoes, well, keep electing people who resist any change in our energy habits. Likewise, if you want a world where climate-driven math.
Please stop reading to us from a newspaper. Please make your point and take your seat, please.
Well, the point I'm making is that vegetation is everybody's friend, and you, and the ordinance you passed, that this council passed in '06 supports that idea. And just to put you on a positive note, today, December the 10th, I went outside my house and was very fortunate, as is anybody who doesn't mow and create a desert around their home, I walked out and I picked a big bowl of wild salad greens. This is garlic mustard, wild lettuce, lemon balm, made me a sandwich, made me, I've got enough for half a dozen sandwiches, and I'm picked in about 10 minutes around my house today, because I don't mow under ordinance 06-027. This is a blessing, this is a God sin, this is like manna from heaven for anybody who will simply not mow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list, Mr. John Douglas.
Mr. Mayor Prather and the council, my name as the mayor says, John Douglas. I'm here to represent the Scott County NAACP. We're here to request your approval to hold again our Martin Luther King March on January 21st, 2019, at 4:00. Our proposed route this year is kind of like our standard route, starting at Georgetown College and going down College Street to Military, then from Military to Main, then down Main Street all the way to Broadway, turning on Broadway, coming back to College Street, and ending at our beginning route, starting at 4:00. Should be about 45 minutes, and with all the cold weather we've got now, I'm sure by the end it'll be warmer. So, but to worry about.
You're hoping, John. We've had a couple of cold.
A lot of hope. A lot of hope, but we're here to ask the council to approve having the MLK March again this year.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion's been made.
That's, okay.
Ann, seconded, you got a motion.
Say the 19th?
21st, Monday, January 21st.
Monday, the 21st. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, John.
You're welcome. Thank you, council. And we'll be getting back that week, because a whole lot of activity is going to be going on that week, too.
Good. I think we made flight reservations today, John, for the speaker.
Oh, yes, that's going to be on that Monday.
On that?
At the conference.
Yes, sir.
So I'm sure everybody reserved a big for that.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the folks who had signed up for public comment, unless there's anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council. If there's not, allow me to bore you to death with some mayor comments, because we've got several things to catch up on tonight. The first one that I think is really important, and we just couldn't be more proud of this, and this is an honor that Scott Hall has received. Scott, you might come to the podium, because we'd like to embarrass you just a little bit.
A little bit.
Scott is our revenue commission director and has done absolutely wonderful work for us since he arrived in helping us with the confidence of the revenue commission, our reporting, our auditing, and done a wonderful job on that. But I've also reported to you all that Scott has had significant volunteer roles with the Internal Revenue Service, serving on different panels for them, consumer panels, national panels, that he's helped with tax awareness. Scott recently received some very significant recognition on a national level that I'd like for you all to be aware of. Scott has received the President's Volunteer Service Award at the gold level.
Wow. Congratulations.
Which includes the certificate, a medallion, a true medal from this, and a personal letter from the President.
All right.
So this kind of recognition, I'm going to pass these around, Scott.
Congratulations.
The letter is, "Congratulations on receiving the President's Volunteer Service Award. On behalf of a grateful nation, I thank you for your service to your fellow Americans and those most in need. Through your dedicated service, you have ensured the continuation of America's unparalleled commitment to improving the lives of others. Over the past year, you have served as a model of the American spirit. Your many hours of service have strengthened the bonds of cooperation and trust that bring people together while helping address some of the greatest challenges of our time. One of our nation's greatest strengths remains the compassion of our everyday citizens who give so willingly of themselves and their lives for the benefit of others. Each generation of hardworking and kind-hearted volunteers helps write a new chapter of American greatness, and our nation is proud for your commitment to this honorable tradition. As we reflect on your many acts of kindness and charity over this last year, our nation draws inspiration from those who answer the call to help their communities and our nation. With your continued efforts to build on our nature's culture of service, America will proudly remain a land of freedom and opportunity for all. Thank you for your enduring commitment to serving your community and our nation. I trust that you will continue to work for the betterment of others and an even stronger future for the American people." Signed, President Donald Trump.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Congratulations, Scott.
Very much.
We'll give you a moment at the podium.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, Chief Hartley, members of the council, thank you. It's not every day you come home from work and have a letter from the White House, but apparently it does happen to some from time to time. I thought it was a joke, but no, it was not. I can tell you that it has been an honor and a privilege to serve on this panel for three years. You know, the IRS is not everyone's favorite organization. They're a pretty easy target, but it's one thing to criticize, it's another to roll up your sleeves and try to make it better. And I thought I was uniquely qualified after 15 or 20 years of listening to taxpayers at the ground level that I could contribute, and I did. Especially my last year as National Vice Chair has been incredible, and when the National Taxpayer Advocate presents her annual report to the Congress later this, in 2019, sometime in the first quarter, February or March, we'll have printed copies of those. And as not only National Vice Chair, but Chairman of the Outreach Committee, I wrote the section on outreach in there. So when I get that, I will share that with everyone as well about the work that we did over the past three years. So thank you all for the recognition. I hope it tells people good things about not only our community, Georgetown, Scott County, but I was one of only two people representing the state of Kentucky as well.
Wow. Well done.
So it's great to meet people from all over the country. There's 75 of us, all 50 states, Washington DC, Puerto Rico, and one international member living in Germany. So thank you all very much.
Reflects well on our community, and congratulations.
Thank you. It's my pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Very good.
Also wanted to let the council know that yesterday afternoon, out at Country Boy, there was a world premiere, a television show called Downstream Kentucky. It was the version of the show that was shot here in Georgetown. Paula, you were there at Country Boy, I'm not sure if anybody else made it out for that or not. It'll show on KET later in December. We looked up the show dates today, it's on KET's website, and then it'll appear at various times. I think it presents a good image of Georgetown and Scott County. They filmed the Elkhorn Creek loc trip, they did a session at Bourbon 30, they did a meal at Local Feed, and then they had a county judge executive who really knows how to fish, and a mayor that doesn't know how to fish.
Have a competition.
Showing the host how to fish. So that was interesting, too. So look around, it'll be a fun show to see. Also, wanted to, on a much more serious topic, I wanted to speak with the council for just a few minutes about the increase in juvenile violence that we've seen in Georgetown and Scott County. Particularly over the last handful of months. And I've worked with the police department and Dr. Hubb. We have looked at the number of violent incidents that occurred in school last year relative to this year, and there is an alarming increase. Also, you've each read stories recently about juveniles with stolen handguns that went all the way down to age 14. So given this spike, what Chief Bossy and I began talking about, and Dr. Hubb has given his full endorsement and support to this, is that we create a juvenile violence work group to begin meeting, or to begin meeting, to talk about this issue of juvenile violence, which truly is a community issue. It manifests itself in the school system, but the issue is a community issue, and we all have a stake in addressing it. So this isn't a completely inclusive list, but the type of group that Chief Bossy and Superintendent Hubb and I have talked about would be, we would intend to include Ben Martin, our Georgetown School Resource Officer. Dr. Hubb is willing to personally participate in this. Rand Marshall as county attorney. Tony Hampton representing the Sheriff's Department. Either Chief Swanigan or Chief Bossy from the Police Department. We'd like to include a district judge, Mary Jane Phelps, to give the perspective of the judicial system. We think that the Commonwealth's attorney needs to be a part of this work group. Dr. Hubb suggested one or two members from the Scott County School Safety Council, which includes board members, so this can be at a very high level. There may be others that would be obvious that need to be on this list. We'll identify those as we go forward. Chief and I envision trying to get a group like this together to begin this conversation and see where the group will go from there. But to get caring people from all elements of community life, the legal system, law enforcement, and education, probably, hopefully, some counselors and mental health professionals that can help us understand these societal issues, and us take our best step as a community toward trying to find a solution or recommendations to address the spike in violence. Chief, is that a fair explanation of what we've talked about?
Well said, sir.
So we felt, the superintendent, the chief of police, and others felt that we needed a robust community response to a community problem.
Mayor, can I ask a quick question? What, I wonder, and I'm sure this is part of what you all are going to dig into, but I wonder what other communities are doing. I mean, I'm sure they're experiencing some of these same issues, and how are they addressing this? You know, does the state have input? Does the federal government have input? You know, you just wonder, why has it gotten so bad? And what?
And so quickly. You'll see some news stories that are going to compare these numbers, and there's been a substantial spike from last year to this year, and it's one that calls for our attention. You're right, David, we need to know what other places are doing.
Well, we talk as a group, you know, about reinventing the wheel, and sometimes if we kind of go out and we ask, sometimes we can find the answers to some of our problems. And I'm not, I'm saying this is a great thing to do, absolutely, but I just, it's intriguing. I'm curious to know, you know, what is the problem? What is the root?
And I hope with a cross-section of those different types of folks, we can learn more about what folks are doing.
Yeah. I appreciate it.
And this committee could include a council member, I don't know. I just wanted you all to know that we're working on this actively and would like to move it forward pretty quickly. Also, would like to bring- Also, would like to bring you all up to date on a really good working meeting that we had last week at the Transportation District Seven in Lexington, which, which handles most of our detailed work. We spent a lot of time talking about East Main Street Extended, where the new Creekside Elementary School is gonna be built, and will be open in less than a year, and we need a road on East Main Street Extended pretty badly. The good news for the council is by going through and carefully value engineering that original proposal, we realized that we didn't really need curb and gutter on all of that road. We needed it in the part in front of the school, and there are certain sections that need it and certain sections we don't. So, the cabinet and our engineers have helped us re-engineer that plan to where we now think that that project is more of a $700,000 project than the 1.2 to 1.5 million we had feared.
That's what we thought at the beginning, wasn't it, around 700,000?
We hoped initially. So, the good news from that meeting is this becomes significantly more affordable for us to do. We'll still look at governor's discretionary funds and other potential opportunities, but we think we can meet the timeline, we think we can get it bid quickly enough where they can be released to start work as soon as weather clears, and we can have a road well before the beginning of school. So, that was good. What we learned about our Cardinal Drive project, we, we've, we've struggled to get our C-MAT grant on Cardinal Drive and our TAP grant on West Main through the engineering selection process and get all this work started. They've pretty much approved every, all the physical improvements we're gonna make on Cardinal Drive. And some of those improvements will occur on school property, because the schools agreed to completely change their stacking pattern for the schools to now take much of the traffic off the road and stack it around the school. There's improvements that will be, will be done by grant proceeds that will help that stacking. We're also gonna get the physical improvements on Thirty-two, where we intersect down at Long Lick with Cardinal Drive. We're gonna have the physical roadway improvements with the left turn lane and what we want. We have not won the traffic light battle yet. So, what is approved today is to make the physical improvements, but we're still working on the traffic light.
That's one of the biggest issues.
Which means, we, we can make it work, but the way we make it work is with police overtime. And we were trying to get, to avoid that ongoing police overtime expense to force it to work in the mornings and afternoon. I think as growth continues to occur, the, they can meet the warrants, that's their technology, meet the traffic warrants to justify the light. Also, this gives us some time to, who knows, maybe seek political solutions to get in the traffic light if the warrants don't work. So, a lot of progress there. We're still working on the traffic light part of that, but we have gotten the other stuff completed. Also, under Mayor's comments, we've got a, a number of board appointments to make this evening, and they're on your agenda. Most of these are reappointments, they're almost exclusively reappointments. And we've always approached people that if they show up and stay engaged, that they deserve the second term appointment. So, you have an executive order.
Mayor, ma- may I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I've read these executive orders, and they're pretty standard. Would it be too assuming of me to make a motion to accept all of them under six, A through E? Make a motion?
But we need to add one.
Okay.
Well, if we could do that, but add one.
And add one?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that the one you handed out, Tracy?
No.
I had extended this invitation for a term on the Georgetown Board of Adjustments, and I got the call last night, accepting. So, what I would like to add to this is appointing Mary Singer as a city appointment to the Georgetown Board of Adjustments for a four-year term ending 2022.
And I'll make a motion to add that one to it as well, if that's not too assuming.
We're approving all of the board appointments plus Mary Singer to the Board of Adjustments.
Second?
Second, thank you. Any questions about those appointments? That, the one appointment that I was having a conversation with, with some folks, is we have an open appointment for the city to the Parks and Recreation Department. I'll do that in January. We got, we got this much done tonight, we'll approach that in January. So, motion's been made and seconded. If there's no, if there are no questions, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That makes short work of much of that, Connie. Then if we can drop.
Oh, you can do this later?
Yeah. Thank you. Item seven on the agenda, Scott United. Jack, I think we have a municipal order approving an incentive.
Yes, sir. You were talking about the, the thing at Country Boy yesterday for the film, and right next door to Country Boy is one of our manufacturing partners, Creform Corporation. So, what we're asking for tonight is a municipal order approving the inducement of an incentive for Creform located on Corbett Boulevard at Lanes Run Business Park. And as per KRS, it's required, and I'm gonna go through the process here in just a second, it'll take me about two minutes to do that, that you have a copy of, but it's required for us to have a company representative be here. Mr. David Garland, who is the Kentucky Branch Manager for Creform is here, and he will just tell you very briefly about Creform, and I'm also gonna give you a brochure he wants me to give you also, which will help that. David, if you would please?
Thank you, Jack. Yeah, I was gonna tell you about where we are, and most of you know where Country Boy Brewery is, so, we're the driveway you turn around in once you go past Country Boys, and so you can come back and park on the street. But, we're a, a material handling company, and we provide products and services to our customers. We design, assemble pipe and joint structures. The pipe and joint, if you look at the little brochure there, you'll see the, the structures, it's a, it's a patented product by Creform. We manufacture the pipe in South Carolina, and we do a lot of assembly and design here for customers and help them with their, their material handling needs. We also design, build, program, install, and service AGV systems, which are automatic guided vehicles. As you can see, we're, we're geared toward industry, we, we sell to manufacturing companies. We also do some, you know, hospitals and stuff like that, but primarily it's manufacturing. And because of the, the nature of our products and services, we hire more highly skilled people than we do laborers. We've only got two assemblers in our plant, and everyone else are engineers or engineering techs. So, we have pretty well-paid people there in our facility. We have currently a hundred, well, in 2018, we serviced a hundred and fifty-three different customers in Kentucky, Southern Ohio, and Southern Indiana, and our smallest customer spent thirty bucks with us. Our largest one spent 3.2 million dollars. So, we have a broad customer base. I'm, as Jack said, I'm the branch manager, and there are twenty-five other folks there that work with me. When we opened our office in 2008, we had two. So, we've, we've grown quite a bit over the past few years.
Which is exactly what goes to the point in terms of the, the Kitfa program for the Kentucky Business Investment Act. Perfect example of an existing manufacturer that was in a small, less east position, went to ownership, bought land at the business park, built a beautiful structure, we, obviously we did the groundbreaking there, we did the ribbon cutting there, room to grant, grow, room to expand, it's all available there. The process form that you have in front of you, I just, I'm just gonna just go briefly, just go through it, just to tell you what, what we go through. In fact, the length of time is in particular, so if you, the number one I had is, is when the actual support letters are submitted by the mayor and the judge, that was done in 2015. If you go down to this, number two, preliminary approval, that was done by Kitfa in September of 2015. Again, understanding, job creation, beginning building of a facility, adding more jobs, and that was starting in 215 moving forward. The facility was finally complete. Kitfa, it's number three, we're here today for local support, which is the ordinance as and/or municipal order, and if that's the case, you approve it, we go to fiscal court on Friday, and then we go to the Kitfa Board on January twenty-fourth in 2019, they'll approve the incentive. The key again is this. Right after that, number five, it says activation. So, the company still has an additional two years to activate just the incentive itself. And by the way, twenty-five employees, growing more, the incentive is only on ten employees. By the way, the average wage that was quoted in our incentive package was thirty dollars an hour. So, with that, I'll ask and answer any questions, or read the municipal order if you would please, or whatever the appropriate process is here.
If there are no questions.
Motion.
That's quick, motion's been made.
I love those.
I'll second if you want.
Is there a second? This, this is very routine for us, and, and it's a business activity that we understand. So, any, any specific questions for, for Jack or, or a gentleman from Creform? If not, all in favor say aye? Opposed?
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Let's see, Chase, you might as well just drag a stool up to the podium, because I think you're gonna be there for a few minutes. We've got several things to, to discuss under GMWSS today. If, if I could talk about the first one, Chase. At the last council meeting, we talked at length about the, the ordinance that we wanted to introduce, and we think will provide a very important tool for Chase as he negotiates with Kentucky American, and that being the very simple ordinance that we, we, they may not extend sewer service unless they're selling the water, unless they sign off that they either don't have the capacity to do it, or this deal with the urban group that we're talking about. We knew this impacted the urban group's development pretty significantly, and we talked about that at the last meeting. We spent a bunch of time talking with their ownership and their attorneys in the last two weeks, and we've come to a bit of a compromise, we think, that lets us stay whole and maintains the integrity of the ordinance we want, we want to use, but also helps this developer out some, and more than that, probably keeps us out of federal court. We didn't want our effort to get this ordinance in place to get us mired in a federal court case. We think we've avoided that with a compromise with the urban group, where we have agreed to provide sewer service for the entire development, allow Kentucky American to sell the water to half of the property, and we will sell water to half of the property. That removes the urban group's objection. It removes the urban group from this public policy conversation that we need to have with Kentucky American, and gives them a way to be out of this conversation. And in fact, this was not a burden, I don't, this was actually suggested by the urban group. So, they were willing to offer this compromise, and we thought it, it matched all the things that we wanted to achieve. The little complicating factor was to do this transaction with the urban group the way we envisioned, the first reading of the ordinance that we had, that we did would not allow this transaction. So, Andrew's changed just a couple of words that will allow this transaction to occur, but maintain the original intent of our ordinance. We thought that was a significant enough change to the ordinance to where tonight we bring you a first reading of the ordinance with that new language, and then we'll have second reading at our first meeting in January. So, with, with that explanation, this has been a really busy topic, and we think this is a, a really acceptable outcome. So, if you'd like to read the ordinance, and then if we have questions, we'll bat those around, or read the summary.
An ordinance creating a new section of Georgetown Code of Ordinances, Chapter Nineteen, Article Three, regarding the provision of sewer service by GMWSS. Summary, one, creates a new section of Chapter Nineteen, Article Three of the Georgetown Code of Ordinances prohibiting GMWSS from providing sanitary sewer service to new subdivisions and developments unless the subdivision or development also uses GMWSS for water service. Unless GMWSS water service is unavailable, or unless the developer has obtained a certificate of sewer service availability within twelve months prior to the effective date of the ordinance. Two, provides for repeal of inconsistent ordinances, serability of provisions, and an effective date upon passage of publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the Georgetown City Clerk's Office 100, North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324. Introduced and publicly over the first time December the tenth, 2018.
That'll be first reading. And then if, if, in the next five weeks, and yes, it will be five weeks before we meet again as a council, if you have questions, Chase will be glad to answer them for you.
If you wanna go ahead and read it again tonight, that's, that's fine by us.
Here we are.
He's in a hurry, I believe.
We can't quite do that. Also tonight, you'll recall at the last meeting, we had first reading of two different bond ordinances, there were two different ordinances required, so tonight we'll have, yeah, come on up Alan, this is, this is your, your end of the world. So, we, we'll have two second readings of ordinances, and then we have a municipal order approving the fees involved.
Yes, ma'am.
At a meeting held on December the tenth, 2018, the City of Georgetown, Kentucky gave second reading to an adopted ordinance entitled, General Bond Ordinance of the City of Georgetown, Kentucky, Providing for the Establishment of Rules, Regulations, and Conditions for the Issuance from Time to Time by Said City of Water and Sewer Revenue Bonds, and Providing for the Collection, Segregation, and Distribution of Their Revenues of the Combined and Consolidated Water and Sewer System. This is a Combined Consolidated Water and Sewer System Revenue Bond Ordinance Setting forth General Rules, Regulations, and Conditions for the Issuance of Utility Revenue Bonds by the City of Georgetown, Kentucky. Provisions are made for the Authorization and Issuance of Water and Sewer System Revenue Bonds in Series upon adoption of a Series Bond Ordinance, for the application of the proceeds of each series, for the establishment of a Bond Proceeds Fund, a Revenue Fund, a Bond Fund, a Reserve Account within the Bond Fund, an Operation and Maintenance Fund, and a Depreciation Fund, for certain covenants of the city with respect to its utility revenue bonds, and for default remedies with respect to such bonds. Such bonds, when issued, will not constitute an indebtedness of the city within the meaning of any constitutional or statutory provision, or limitations but are payable solely from the revenues of the Combined and Consolidated Water and Sewer Systems of the City of Georgetown, Kentucky, to be operated by the Georgetown Board of Water and Sanitary Sewer Commissioners. References may hereby may to the full text of the ordinance for a complete statement of its provisions and terms. The City Clerk of the City of Georgetown, Kentucky hereby certifies that the above summary is true and correct and written in a way calculated to inform the public of the content. References made to the full text of the ordinance, which may be reviewed at the Office of the City Clerk, Georgetown, Kentucky, in the Georgetown City Hall, 100 North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324.
Excuse me?
I've been sick all day, and I was really trying to come and make it.
You need to excuse yourself.
I need to excuse myself.
We still have a courtroom.
I'm really sorry.
I hope you feel better.
I was trying, but it's not working.
Hope you feel better.
Does that take care of both items, both B and C? Just B? I'll make a motion for approval.
Yeah, this is B.
Okay.
Motion's been made, and Connie made the second. Shall we call or roll?
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mrs. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. So, that ordinance passes, now we can have second reading of the other ordinance. Mike, for the newspaper's benefit, this was a refinance of some existing debt that the water company had. They'll save 130,000 over the life of the loan, I think.
Summary of Bond Ordinances and Notice of Adoption. At a meeting held on December tenth, 2018, the City of Georgetown, Kentucky gave reading, second reading to, and enacted an ordinance entitled, Series A Bond Ordinance, authorizing issuance of 3,612,000 principal amount of water and sewer revenue refunding bonds. 2018 Series, which amount may be increased or decreased by up to 360,000 of the City of Georgetown, Kentucky, designate the paying agent and registrar in respect thereof, approving the preparation of preliminary and final official statements in respect thereof, providing for the sale of such bonds to the lowest and best bidder, and authorizing the execution of documents on behalf of the city. This ordinance authorizes the issuance of revenue bonds by the City of Georgetown, Kentucky, in an aggregate principal...
in an aggregate principal amount.
I'm sorry, we were just talking. You were reading.
Approximately.
Let me gavel myself.
$450,000 to provide monies to refund its obligation under an assistance agreement dated as of January 30th, 2007, between the City of Kentucky Rural Water Finance Corporation, which was originally entered into to pay the cost of the construction of additions and improvements to the city's combined and consolidated water and sanitary sewer system to fund the reserve account and to pay the cost of issuing the 2018 Series A bonds. Related to the bonds, the ordinance also approves a preliminary and final official statement, official terms and conditions of the sale, a continuing disclosure agreement, and procedures regarding continuing disclosure undertakings. The bonds are to be sold in an advertised public sale in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 424 of the Kentucky Revised Statute or by the solicitation of proposals as required by law. The bonds are to bear interest payable at such rates and on the interest payments date as shall be established upon their sale. The City Clerk of the City of Georgetown, Kentucky hereby certifies that the above summary is true and correct and written in a way calculated to inform the public of its content. References made to the full text of the ordinance, which may be reviewed at the office of the City Clerk, Georgetown, Kentucky, in the City Hall, 100 North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324.
Thank you.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion's been made.
I'll second it.
And second, Ms. Conway. If there are no questions, we'll call or roll.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mrs. Butcher-Comway?
Yes.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Thank you. Connected to those ordinances, there is also a municipal order that we did not put on the agenda that's required to approve the fees that were a part of this deal.
That's what I gave you off.
They were. We knew what we netted out in savings, but we have to have an MO to actually approve this case. And that's what was handed out to you.
Tracy, do you have that?
Right here.
I gave that to him.
Okay.
Do you want to see it?
Does it need to be read? Motion.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. So you can go ahead and complete the work on that bond issue, guys. Thank you. Chase, then I think you've got some routine business for us.
Yes, sir. Georgetown Municipal has three purchase orders for council consideration tonight. The first two, all three are with Bluegrass Engineering for Design Services. The first two are the purchase orders associated with the contracts I brought for your consideration at the last meeting. So item D is for $23,576.38 and that's for the design of the Northwest bypass water line with the bypass extension. We have to relocate a water line that's a pass-through cost to KYTC. They're funding the design and the construction. Second is, as we brought the last meeting, it is a fee adjustment for design services on our operations building. That's for $49,257.50. And then the third design purchase order is for $69,105 and that's for a new water line extension. And that is a project that is budgeted in our current FY19 budget, approved budget.
All right, motion.
Is that to approve all three?
Three.
Okay, good. Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Thank you. And if there are no questions per Chase, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next one requires more conversation.
Yes, sir.
We, council heard the presentation from Hazen and Sawyer last week about the plan by which we intend to do the trailer park sewer need. And we learned that, that by expanding this plan some, we reach, we achieve real efficiencies for the water and sewer service. The water company had recommended, and the engineers had recommended, alternative three. That does give us the additional sewer capacity in some of the areas around Georgetown where we simply cannot provide the service today. So we have municipal orders in here to approve the engineering contracts. And if you've had a chance to look at the municipal orders, these are very significant engineering contracts. What I, what I want the council to understand is GMWSS will pay for their one part of the contract exclusively themselves. It really doesn't, it's a part of the contract with the City of Georgetown since we entered into this contract rather than GMWSS. GMWSS will pay from their proceeds the part of this that does the general improvements for their system. The other engineering fees will be paid for through the grant proceeds by the $475,000 commitment from the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government and a portion of the city's $250,000 cash contribution and a portion of the county's $250,000 cash contribution. So while this is a significant engineering contract in excess of a million dollars, we do have the funding in place to pay for this as expected. So with that introduction, at a 30,000-foot level, we had indicated that the step we would ask you to take tonight is to approve an engineering contract and that's the MO that you have before you tonight. Any questions? Yes, sir.
I guess one of the other things that I think is significant is the elimination of seven pump stations. Is that right?
Initially, we will eliminate three. And as we build some more sewers in the future, hopefully with development partnerships, we'll be able to eliminate up to four more.
Okay.
And those are seven existing pump stations. But John is also, our engineer, has explained to us that this solution will preclude us from needing other pump stations in the future. So we're getting rid of seven existing pump stations and we're eliminating the need for some future ones. So it's more than even that.
Chase, did we ever figure out exactly what the cost to operate a pump station might be? I know you and I talked about it at a pretty high level, but I don't know that we ever.
I can bring back up the PowerPoint I brought that from the presentation. And those numbers are actually in there in that, the total cost of ownership, that column when we looked at the initial infrastructure costs. Then we add the total operation, operational cost, and then the total cost of ownership over the 30 years. And that's what those numbers were.
Okay.
But I mean, I can break that down further.
I don't want you to have to pull it back up. I'd like.
We brought it and we can, we can go through it if anybody would like.
At some point, we can, you can get it to us. It's significant. And like you and I discussed, the way I look at things like that is that when we eliminate that expense, that expense can transfer over towards debt service to cover X number of hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars worth of debt.
That and with this, with this cost that we're seeing for the design and the anticipated construction, we also feel that we can recover more costs through a new privilege fee agreement with the new pump station as well as partnerships with the development community, which I'd like to say that we, we very much appreciate the statement made earlier tonight, that, that there is a partnership and there's a willingness to work. And, and I think that it's, it's rare that the, it does provide for a positive relationship with Georgetown Municipal and the development community to share in the cost of this new infrastructure that this project will bring.
Yeah. You know, it's interesting that sometimes something so negative and so bad, like the health environmental issues at the trailer park, can turn into something hopefully very, very positive for many people and certainly the community for a long time to come.
Absolutely.
And I assume that some of the significant engineering expense, they'll pay their fair share when the time comes as well. So, Mayor, I'll make a motion for approval. I know there may be some further discussion, but I'm excited about taking the next step.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the municipal order, approving the contract with Hazen and Sawyer. And this is final design for the project so we can get serious about what this solution's going to look like.
And the, Mayor, I'm sorry, something that City Attorney asked me to bring up is that these orders are contingent upon our board's approval of paying for our portion, that $244,600. That's Georgetown Municipal Sheriff, the design. And we will be taking that to the board next week for their approval. And that's not in our current budget. We have to work that in, but that's our portion. And these are, your vote tonight, your consideration is contingent upon their approval.
That's real important to us, Chase. Because we, we like, excuse me, Steve. In a moment. We have a great working relationship with the Water Board. And even though this is an odd project because it's our project that you're doing for us, we don't step on that board's toes. So if you'd make it clear to your board that we are not getting out in front of them by intention, but.
Mm-mm. Yes, sir. And, and we've already done the same presentation with our board that we did the last meeting. They, they recognize the benefits of alternate three, that we get to not only try to solve this environmental problem at the mobile home parks, but by piggybacking some larger improvements to the existing system on the south side of the city. We take advantage of that low interest rate, the half percent from KIA. These are improvements that we're going to have to make either way. By doing it now, we, we get to finance our project in conjunction with the south sewer extension at a rate we're not going to be.
Yeah. And that saves the taxpayers, your customer base.
Saves our customer base a lot of money and a lot of time as well.
Yes, that's good.
Yes, sir, Steve.
I don't know if you saw yesterday's Herald Leader, but there was a front page story in the Herald Leader about Inez, Kentucky, Martin County. For years, they have been screaming, lamenting poor water service from, from the local water company in Inez. And the picture yesterday in the Herald Leader showed people putting buckets, a row of plastic buckets, beside their house to catch rainwater. And I've said, I wrote, I phoned up there years ago, I wrote letters to the Herald Leader, may have commented here, that's what they should have been doing in the first place. Is putting buckets out. The finest water you can get, you can get off the roof. And, and Georgetown, I've got the history. Y'all probably know the history of Bevins and Apple and whatever his name is. It did the history of Scott County. About 1900, the state urged all towns in Georgetown to, to put in sewer for alleged sanitary improvement.
Right.
There is a huge literature available to anybody who will take the time to read about managing home excreta.
Thank you, Steve. We're through with that topic. No, sir. We're through with that topic. We're going to talk about a sanitary sewer line and not talking about burying excreta. Please, let us move on. Let us move on, Steve.
Mayor, we got a motion and a second on the floor.
Yes, we do.
And I urge you to vote, to vote no.
Steve, take your seat. Does everybody understand the motion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Chase.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. We look forward to seeing the completed product.
Tremendously looking forward.
That gets through the GMWSS part of this agenda. Good. Under City Attorney, we have second reading of the ordinance that, where we're making very clear what the height of fences in Georgetown should be.
An ordinance creating and amending the Landscape and Land Use Buffer Ordinance. One, amend Section 6.241 of Landscape and Land Use Buffer Ordinance to eliminate a conflict with another city ordinance regarding fence heights and residential zones. Two, provides for repeal of inconsistent ordinances, serability of provisions, and an effective date upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for the examination of the City Clerk's Office 100, North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324, or at www georgetown ky.gov. Introduced and publicly read for the first time November 26th, 2018. Publicly read the second time December the 10th, 2018.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And second. Thank you, Mark.
I do have a question, though, when you.
Yes, sir, what's that?
Just, just to make absolutely clear, and I know you mentioned this at our last meeting, that this is not retroactive for any homeowner that already, that already has an eight-foot fence.
No, sir. This is prospective.
Moving forward.
After tonight. This will be the maximum legal, I, well, after we get it published in the paper, it will be the law. So if there are no other questions, we'll call the roll.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mrs. Butcher-Comway?
Yes.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Thank you. That ordinance passes. Next, under City Attorney, you have a municipal order approving a contract with Commonwealth Technology. This is a new copier contract. We're finally getting out of an old, bad contract with Toshiba. And we think getting better equipment. We're getting some, Eric, I think we're getting a couple of machines for your oil's use, chief, a couple for the police department's use. This is on state bid price, but it's pretty recent.
Need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion.
Thank you.
Second?
And a second. Thank you. If there are no questions about the copier contract, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm just trying to share, Mayor. That's all I'm trying to do. Share.
All right. Let's see. Item C, we had been, your inter-local committee, three magistrates and the judge, three council members and myself have, have met to talk about our new stormwater inter-local agreement. Since we've been under, under the EPA's permitting process for 10 years, the county is just becoming responsible for, for that permit. So we've agreed to share some engineering costs, share permitting costs. We can do much of this work in our name and include the county in these applications and do it, we think, a lot cheaper. So the inter-local committee unanimously met last week, I think, and unanimously recommended to the court and the council that we adopt this inter-local agreement. Basically says that if each entity needs, it's like our code enforcement. If each entity needs to make physical improvements in their jurisdiction, they'll pay for their own. But on some of the shared engineering stuff, we'll pay for it together. It's pretty straightforward and simple.
Yes, we met, we met Friday morning at 7:30 AM and I'd like to make a motion, Mayor.
We did meet at 7:30 on Friday. Thank you. Motion's been made.
Second.
And second. Thank you, Mark. And if there are no further questions about that inter-local, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item D is kind of an interesting transaction. We have a lot of those that we bring to you all. We had discussed with you and you had approved a change of order in our 911 system so that we could build a tower that the city and the county would own rather than lease space off a Crown.
Castle.
Crown Castle Tower. And I think it paid for itself after 12 years, 50-year asset.
Excuse me.
We have to lease a little spot to put the tower on. We don't have all of the details written in the lease agreement tonight. But we have the biggest points understood. The parts we know the council's going to be interested in, which is how much does it cost? And we thought if we could get you to approve the bare bones part of this so that we don't wait five weeks to start with construction, we think it's a safe transaction. And the municipal order points out, if you can just explain.
Yeah, I mean, the, the main term is that the rent is one-tenth of the rent, the revenues that we get from rental. So, but otherwise, there's, it's a $1 for a 99-year lease. There's no, we, we agree to put in road improvements that will go up to the tower, but no further. Keep the road clear as we'll have to do to maintain it. Otherwise, those are the main points of the contract.
Did we have any type of, like, first-class refusal or anything like that in terms of behind the property, if they chose to sell it or?
We haven't negotiated that, but doesn't mean we can. I mean, it's a ground, it's a 100-year ground lease. And so we.
They could.
I mean, if in 100 years, we.
Yeah.
Want to purchase it.
I don't know. I just.
We will be.
Always have that option.
Yeah.
Somebody will.
But they could sell that lease, right? They could sell that.
That's not a point we covered, whether, I mean, I'm assuming it's going to have to be assignable if the property is transferable, so.
Which, that didn't, doesn't change the term, so.
No.
I guess it really doesn't matter. The only other question I'd have is, we talked about getting a credit for the expense that we had and all that. You're good on that?
It's all good.
Okay.
I'm certain that it was covered in the maintenance cost that we anticipated.
Okay.
The motion, David? I'm kidding.
Anybody, go ahead. I'm good.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Motion's been made.
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Thanks, Chuck. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Well, I finally got to that page in my pocket, and you already approved it. Under City Engineer, we've got three, we've got two very routine actions, municipal orders accepting street dedications that are kind of old, and we're just picking them up. There's some in Cherry Blossom Phase Four, and dedication in Pleasant Meadows at Rocky Creek. Eddie, I didn't ask Eddie to come tonight, he said they met all the standards of the engineering department.
May I make a motion, Mayor, for A and B, ten A and B?
Thank you. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. No questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The other item, under City Engineer, item C, are updates, a municipal order approving amendments to our snow plan. The snow plan has to be a living document, it has to be updated periodically. So, this change, it updates our key contact information, it adds new streets that we've taken into our road network, it updates our public works inventory, which is a part of our snow plan, and updates the maps. So, it just makes sure our snow plan does not get stale and it's still a functional plan.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Motion's been made.
Second, Mayor.
And second.
I'm just waiting for somebody to say something, you know?
Okay, if there are no questions about the changes to the snow plan, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Under the police department, we have a resolution accepting a voc-a-grand. We've had such success with the program, and we had been led to believe that if our program was successful, we could continue to expect funding, and there's a municipal, or, excuse me, a resolution accepting an update to our voc-a-grand.
I'll make a motion for that, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I will second that, Mayor.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Before we get to council comments, if I could have the privilege of the podium again, like I've never, like I've never not had it, right? This group of elected officials came into office four years ago. The council has remained intact for four years, and I think it's been one of the most productive embass, I think it's been one of the most productive city councils that I've had the privilege of being a part of. And I want to compliment all eight council members on how much progress we made over four years. And I, I just could not be more proud of the work that these eight folks have done together. And this'll be our last council meeting of this particular group. I want everybody to know how much your, your contributions have been appreciated and recognized. While we have not done this in the past, we talked about this, and we wanted to, there are two council members who finished this term tonight, and we, we wanted a, just a resolution of the city of Georgetown expressing appreciation. I'm not good at reading these things. I get emotional. Why don't you read that for me, please?
A resolution of the city of Georgetown, Kentucky, expressing appreciation for outstanding public service to Millie Butcher-Comway as council member. Whereas Millie Butcher-Comway was elected in November of twenty fourteen to a term of two years on the Georgetown City Council, and was re-elected to a second two-term in November twenty sixteen. And whereas Ms. Butcher-Comway served on the Public Works Committee and the Georgetown-Scott County Friends of the Park Committee, and whereas during her four years of service, Ms. Comway actively sought to improve the lives of Georgetown citizens, tirelessly advocated for curbside recycling, pedestrian safety, and supporting increasing the city's efforts at maintenance and beautification. Now therefore be it resolved by the city of Georgetown that the council does hereby express its appreciation to Millie Butcher-Comway for her four years of faithful service as a member of the Georgetown City Council. This resolution was, resolution was approved by a vote of the city council, city of Georgetown, on the tenth day of December twenty eighteen.
Is there a motion for approval?
Motion.
Go ahead.
No, you got it.
Second, Mayor.
And a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Millie.
Thank you, Millie.
Resolution of the city of Georgetown, Kentucky, expressing appreciation for outstanding public service to Chuck Bradley as council member. Whereas Chuck Bradley was elected in November of twenty fourteen to a term of two years on the Georgetown City Council, and was re-elected to a second term in November of twenty sixteen. And whereas Mr. Bradley served on the fire committee and the traffic committee, and whereas during his four years of service, Mr. Bradley supported innovative approaches to solid waste collection, common area maintenance, and traffic control. He successfully advocated on behalf of property owners for legislation to provide a common scheme of development for phased developments and subdivisions. He supported prudent fiscal policies while searching for unique solutions to Georgetown's challenges. Now therefore be it resolved by the city of Georgetown that the council does hereby express its appreciation to Chuck Bradley for his four years of faithful service as a member of the Georgetown City Council. This resolution was approved by the vote of the city council, city of Georgetown, on the tenth day of December twenty eighteen.
Motion, Mayor.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all. Now, the portion left of the agenda is council comments. Mark, I'm sorry, you're good. Chuck?
Well, it's my last time. I really do appreciate that. That was, I wasn't expecting that at all. When I first came on to council four years ago, I had an idea of tightening the ship, cutting costs, you know, looking out for the taxpayers' dollar, and I think I can look back with the, the, this whole council cooperating together. We've done that. We've left this, I think, I feel like I'm leaving this city in a better shape than what it was when we came in, and with your leadership, had a big, big part of that. I know that we've had a few disagreements along the time, right, Millie, but, but we're good. I think what else I wanted to say, there, there has been one thing on my mind that I wish would have gotten solved, that we haven't been able to, and I hope you guys continue to work on it, is, is the HOA ordinance. We have predatory practices by some developers and management companies, or owned by the developers, against some people in some subdivisions in this, this city that we need to take care of and fix and stop those practices. Other than that, I, I really look back and, and I'm thinking that we've cut costs on anything. I think of the telephone bill we were getting, that we found that we were paying for, that had been, lines had been turned off for how many years, Andrew? Twenty years, fifteen, twenty years?
Yeah.
So, I really feel good about the situation we're leaving. I have no, no regrets and no resentments, and I think I'm leaving the city in good hands.
Thank you, Chuck. You've done a great job.
Thank you, Chuck.
Connie?
I'm looking forward to the next two years. I'm gonna miss Millie and Chuck. A little sidekick over here. Looking forward to working with Todd and Tammy in the next two years. But right now, it's been a good year, it's been a good two years, and I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and see you next year, and everybody have a safe holiday.
Thank you.
And I don't have anything else business-wise.
Okay.
Mayor, as well, I want to commend Chuck and Millie. It's been a very good group of folks to work with, and I worked with a lot of city councils over the years, and I get asked a question often about this group, you know, and the worker relationship that we have. And I'm not sure there's been a better gr, I don't, there hasn't been a better group, I will say that. There's not been a better group to work with. We've done a lot of good things, and when you look at the, the list of achievements that, that you've presented to us and that you've spearheaded, and I know you've had a lot of good help involved with your staff and the work that this, this council's put into it, but it's, it's been impressive. This has been a, a really good four-year run, and it's been enjoyable. There are, there are, for me, and I've been involved for obviously quite some time, but there, you know, there've been highs and lows in terms of the level of enjoyment, and fortunately things are, are ticking up. As, as Chuck said, we're, we're better off now than we probably were four years ago, and that, that feels real good.
Yep.
We've been very, very conscious about the expenses and trying to keep things as, as tight as we can, and, and again, that, that falls back on, on the mayor and, and the staff that he has, and with, with the help from this body, so. The other thing I'll say is that, that this group has, has become a bit of a family.
Yep.
So, Millie and Chuck, when, when we see you out, or you see me out, I want you to be sure to come over and say hi to me if I haven't seen you first, or I'll certainly do the same. So, it's, it's been a, it's been a privilege to, to serve with both of you, and wish you both the best.
Thank you, David. Good.
Thank you. Harmon?
Kind of what David said, it's been an honor to work with this group of people. I've been on several councils, worked with three different mayors. This has been a great working council. We, we disagree, but we're not disagreeable. We still work for the better of the community. Appreciate your staff, Tracy and Andrew and Kyle, well, when Kyle was here, now we got Eddie, and they do a great job, and appreciate you. Leadership goes a long way. You bring it out in front of us, and we make the right decisions.
Yep.
And Chuck, it's been an honor. Millie, it's been an honor.
Thank you.
And as David said, we'll, we'll be around, you'll see me a lot of places in a few weeks, but thank you all for, for being such good friends.
Thank you, Mark. Millie?
Well, I just wanted to say that I've enjoyed... Being a member for the last four years, that I've always considered this my full-time job, that I love Georgetown and the citizens, and I'm all in, in whatever I try. And I want to thank the citizens for allowing me to serve as a councilman.
Thank you.
And I'll miss you.
Thank you, Millie.
Well done.
Would you, phone call away, honey.
Millie, I expect you every couple meetings to come up here and talk about the...
Curbside recycling?
No. You can leave that one alone, okay?
I expect you to be here in a hurry.
Oh, the sidewalks on West Aintree, yes.
We'll talk about that, Millie.
We won't let it die.
We will continue to talk about that.
We will not let it die.
If there's no further business going for the council, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
David and Connie, can I borrow you all two seconds?
Sure. You all have a good one. All right. Millie?